The Board of Ed will move to executive session to discuss personnel and other matters, the disclosure of which would result in an unwarranted invasion of personal privacy. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. And if everybody could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We're gonna, we're gonna give this one more shot.
Give that video shot.
We're gonna give this video shot with the, you know, the video that was created for the New York State Council School Superintendent's Association Winter Conference and Advocacy Workshops. And so this is our students at Clayton Huey and some of our high school students signing the National Anthem, or the Pledge of Allegiance, excuse me.
Well worth the wait.
Right, and, and if you didn't know, yes, you can dance to the pledge, as that girl showed us.
They certainly recite it much more enthusiastically than I do, so thank you very much for that. That's great. That brings us to the Superintendent's Report, and the first thing we add is, we're gonna do the student recognition first, right, Ron?
We are, absolutely, we probably have some students on, so I'm actually going to share my screen and hope that my presentation is right there, although I don't know where it is. And it should be. And so Marissa can, if Marissa can jump in, she was going to share the Students of the Month. So, as you know, we recognize Students of the Month, and we utilize the students, you know, we utilize the framework for International Baccalaureate, and Ms. Mangonia, you there?
Coming in.
Okay. I don't want to steal her thunder, but let her introduce this.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, great.
Great, so thank you for allowing me to present our Students of the Month for the month of January, this is definitely one of my favorite things to do, I get to call the families and talk to the students about how proud we are, and as Dr. Messera was just saying, in the past, we used to do Student of the Month based on content areas, so the English Student of the Month, or the Math Student of the Month, and as we became an International Baccalaureate School, we really started to try and embody the learner profile attributes, and as we did so, our teachers started to identify students not based on their specific academic content, but on their attributes that are really shaping the culture of our, of our school, so I'm very excited to be able to announce our Students of the Month, so if we can, oh, yes, so we have Kathleen Kelly, she was recognized as being balanced by her teachers. We have Alexandra Zematio, who is recognized as being caring. Elmer Valdez Canales is, is recognized for being a great communicator. Dennis Slaviov is recognized for being an inquirer. Kaitlyn Gould is recognized for being knowledgeable. Olivia Stein is recognized for being open-minded. And John Gallo is recognized for being principled. Andrew Frank is being recognized for being reflective. And Josh Lehrer is being recognized for being a risk taker. Benjamin Dench is recognized for being a thinker.
That's all 10.
That's all 10, so congratulations again, I hope that those students were able to be on here and hear their names, we're very proud of you, and keep up the good work. I also, if I can, I just wanted to recognize Abby Brennan and Annabelle Cressy for signing the Pledge of Allegiance during that presentation before, so they did a great job, and I just wanted to recognize them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of the students.
And is, Marissa, were you gonna do, or is Jeremy gonna do the, the Student of the Month that was recognized through the Eastern Long Island Academy of Applied Technology? I mean, I can read it, or is Jeremy, I guess Jeremy's gonna do that?
I am unsure if Jeremy's going to do that.
Yeah, all right, no, I thought, because I thought he was doing it, Jeremy, is Jeremy in there still? If, if not, I will do it. Bill, do you see Jeremy? Ah, there he is.
You got me, you hear me?
I can hear you, Jeremy, thanks.
All right, so I was, it was my pleasure to get a, a correspondence for what they call Employee of the Month in the CTE program at Big Spoin Technical Center in Bellport for the months of December and January, and that was for Caitlin Underwood for Animal Science II, and I thought that was a wonderful acknowledgement, and I apologize, I didn't realize my video was off, if you don't mind, I would just also like to mention that I received a similar correspondence for the honor roll for the second marking period from our, for our OCHED students, and Brendan Tenney, Electrical Trade and Alternate Energy, Caitlin Underwood, as you might expect, in Animal Science II, and Anaya Williams for Fashion Merchandising and Design, all received that, that just came today, so I figured since I was here, I would let the board and the public hear of those wonderful accomplishments for our students who are in school, whether it be virtual or in person, and then go off to do their trades and learn another aspect for them to pursue in their careers.
Fantastic, all right.
Great, thank you, congratulations to all of them.
Thank you, Jeremy, thank you, Melissa, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
You know, one of, one of the things that came up recently, yesterday, we had Fox News Channel come into our school, I got a call about a week and a half ago from the County Executive's Office, and they had requested that they, Fox News do a national feature on our students and the return to sports, so, you know, immediately we thought, right, of, you know, because it's the high-risk sports, it's winter and basketball, we thought of those kids last year who were on their way, we believe, to winning a state championship, and we thought it would be appropriate to, to say that, hey, maybe Fox can come and take some film of their, their practice, we got snowed out on that one, but it worked out because they were able to schedule one for yesterday when there was a game, and so we had some of our basketball athletes and some of our girls across and boys across and football athletes have an opportunity to be interviewed by Fox News, thank you, Mr. Babzian for being there, thank you, Mr. Thode, for all your work to help to arrange this, but we had Brian Kilmeade from, from Fox and Friends come in, this story will be airing tomorrow, 5:20 and 6:20 a.m., and I thought, our kids represented us so well, we were so proud, and they even got some, some film of the game, which was a, a win for Center Riches versus Wyndance, so really, just a great feel-good story for our children and for Center Riches, really proud of our kids, the way they represented it, you know, Center Riches yesterday, so please tune in tomorrow, 5:20 a.m. and 6:20 a.m., and take a look at the feature for Return to Sports on Long Island with Center Riches, and so I'm just excited about that opportunity that came our way. The other thing, you know, when we talk about the return, you know, we, we know we're having these conversations all the time, and it is not an easy conversation when, when we know that our goal is to have all of our kids in, you know, and, and we do feel like, you know, we're, we're constantly reevaluating, we're constantly looking at, at the different ways we can try to increase capacity in our schools, but it certainly is not easy. As the community knows, we did run, we did have a survey that we put out there, trying to gather information, we are constantly reaching out to, to ask questions, doesn't necessarily mean that we're making promises to bring kids back, but we are trying to understand what people want, and, and then try to really dig into the data and figure out what can we do to, to support our kids better and bring more, more kids back into our school. And so with that, I'm going to, I'm gonna ask Marissa and Jeremy to step out, oh, no, Marissa, you could stay, I'll ask Jeremy to step out and maybe have, and Jeremy, with, with a great deal of thanks for your support yesterday and, and all your, your work, you know, for everything you've been doing, but ask Melissa Reggio, our middle school principal, to step in and talk a little bit about, you know, our latest move to try to, you know, bring back some more kids in person with greater, so I'll turn it over to Melissa and Marissa.
Hi, everyone, thank you for having me here tonight, as Dr. Messera said, we can't wait to have all of our students back in our schools, I was walking through the school today and into the cafeteria, and I was reminiscing to myself how there was a time where we would go into the cafeteria and ask the students to bring the volume down, because it was so loud and so robust, and I kind of chuckled to myself, but remembering that, and it's just the stark contrast now, and we just can't wait, you know, seeing them at desks instead of tables, and we can't wait to fill our school again and have those everyday, quote, "middle school problems" back when we have the cafeteria full and noisy, but for now, what we've been doing, as Dr. Messera has shared, have conversations every day of what can we do, and who can we bring back at an appropriate social distance of six feet, so at the middle school and the high school, we review data all the time, especially at the end of each quarter, some of the data we review is attendance data, chronic absenteeism, multiple failures, we look at students that are struggling, and always, and one of the trends that we saw at the end of the second quarter, there's really two subgroups who are struggling academically right now that are not back five days, and that, that is students in our DCT program, our direct consult teachers, that's when we have a special education teacher, and the regular education teacher in the classroom at the same time, and also our ENL students that are receiving transitional services, so we ran all of our numbers, looked closely, remeasured our classrooms, and looked closely at our rosters, and we are able to bring back our students in our DCT program, and the students in our ENL program receiving transitional services while keeping the, the distance of six feet in the classrooms. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Mangonia to add a little bit to that, but those are really two subgroups that are what we're seeing as our most at-risk population, and that's what we've been asked to look at, is who are our most vulnerable students right now academically, and those are the two groups that, after looking at the second quarter data, we're seeing are struggling the most right now.
Thank you, Dr. Reggio, yes, we saw the same trend up at the high school, and we ran our numbers and pulled as much data as we can to try to see if there was a specific criteria that we could try to identify, to bring back any students, and try and give our students the best possible shot at improving learning, having a better educational experience, and although, just like Dr. Reggio said, we wish we could bring all of our students back, it's not feasible with our six-feet social distancing guidelines, so with that being said, we can bring back our DCT students and our ENL students with transitional services and still keep our six-feet guidelines, so although it did take a little bit of creativity, some rooms are bigger than other rooms, so there may have been a room change or two, it is feasible, it is possible, and keeping the six-feet guidelines was a necessity, so with that being done, we can still bring these students in and give them extra support that they need at this time.
Okay, thank you for that report, that's, I think that that's good news, and, and that certainly will be a great support for some of who kids, who, some of our children who could really use it, so that, for doing the work on that and, and really putting together a plan, you know, to get those kids back for us, you know, clearly, you know, we keep saying, you know, we're, we're gonna be as creative as possible, we're trying, you know, there are a lot of avenues we're trying to explore to, to basically mitigate the risk, right, you know, when we talk about sports coming back, and one of the things that I emphasized yesterday was that bringing back sports certainly was not easy, you know, when I was talking to Fox News and talking to our county executive, but it was a partnership, and it was a partnership to say that whenever you're gonna take additional risk, you need to mitigate that risk in some way, and that's why, that's why we're doing testing, and I, and I can say that, you know, testing was something that had to be done by all schools in Suffolk County, and, and it has been effective, you know, unfortunately, we, we did come across a positive test today that ended up quarantining 17 of our student athletes, and that is something that I did put a letter out earlier today, and, and we are going to be, you know, seeing some of these things, we know that in our elementary school, we've had about seven quarantines of, of full classrooms, you know, you do need to follow the guidance of our local Department of Health and the CDC when, when doing those quarantines, so, you know, these are challenging times, you know, one, one of the things we are hopeful for, the CDC just changed guidance today to indicate that those people who have two doses of vaccine, so if you're fully vaccinated with the RNA vaccines, that's Pfizer and Moderna, you do not have to quarantine if exposed to a contagious individual, so that's, that's a game changer in terms of showing the efficacy of the vaccine and the confidence the CDC has in the vaccines to be able to, you know, basically make, hopefully, down the road, change what we're doing, I can tell you that I have been, through my contacts with Suffolk County Department of Health Services, I have been aggressively pursuing opportunities for vaccination of our employees, in the next couple of weeks, all of our employees that want to be vaccinated will have at least their first dose, you know, we made arrangements to have, clearly, you know, I've been sending out links and people have been making vaccination appointments on their own, but most recently, Long Island Urgent Care came in and, and agreed to partner with us, and took 40 of our employees on Monday and, and gave them vaccines, that was all they had available, they are ordering more vaccines for the remainder of our staff that want to have, want to be vaccinated, and as soon as those come in, we'll make those appointments, further, Suffolk County Department of Health Services contacted me to arrange for vaccination of some school employees, and, and we had to prioritize, we will be able to vaccinate some special education teachers and support staff, so, you know, we're, you know, we're really aggressively pursuing this, anybody that wants a vaccine, we feel we, we will in the coming, you know, roughly month and a half, we should have them all vaccinated, and I think that that could be a game changer for us, especially with the weather changing and hopefully decreased, you know, levels of infection within our community as the weather changes, and, you know, with that, I, I, I'm kind of feeling like there might, there might be some movement within the guidance down the road, I don't know what that might look like, but, you know, say if there's a certain percentage of your staff that's vaccinated, it, it might allow greater flexibility, and there are hints of that, so I'm optimistic that we, we may provide more opportunity, you know, in the next month and a half, we might learn more, and hopeful that that would lead to, obviously, our ability to have more kids in school. That's, that's pretty much all I have, but I would like to, at this time, turn the presentation over to a budget workshop, so Marissa and Melissa, thank you so much for that, I really appreciate that, and all the work you put into, you know, making sure we could bring those kids back.
Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
We're gonna turn it over to Carrie Lockman, the Assistant Superintendent for Business, and she will share with you her presentation, her, her latest budget presentation, Budget Workshop Number Three, where we'll be talking about the administrative capital and revenue budgets, going by reigning role as Assistant Superintendent, who will help her with that.
Bill, I cannot share my screen. So as Dr. Messera said, this is now our third budget workshop, we're gonna go over, the way we're gonna present the budget, if you've looked at the budget calendar, is going through the three components of the budget, each workshop, so this one, we're gonna talk about the administrative component, the capital component, and start introducing some of the revenue budgets that we are working on right now, so, again, expenditure side, administration, capital, and on the revenue, we have the tax levy information for the community, we have a state aid update, and some information on our tuition revenue, those are the three largest components of our revenue areas, so as we move through the budget process, each meeting will continue to bring in more areas as we start locking in numbers, so with regards to the administrative component, there are various categories that make this up, it's all the, as it says, administration costs that are related to running a school district, so all the district office staffing, costs related to the budget vote, costs related to legal services, the district insurance, so both these expenditures are included in this area, as well as all of our support staff, will all come through the administrative component of the budget. So this is what our staffing is looking like, you can see on this chart, it's broken out by the different levels of staffing that we have, district office administration, which is the cabinet, our clerical staff, which is the support staff within district office, the building administration, that's all of our principals and assistant principals, our building clerical staff, all those secretaries you see that are helping keep the building moving along every day, and then we have also curriculum writing, which is some support that we get over the summer months typically from our teaching staff to help get the school year started, so as you can see in this, all the FTEs are flat, except for, you can see in the building clerical staff, we're gonna increase it, or we're proposing to increase it 1.5, if you recall, last year, as we were finishing up the budget, we did reduce a lot of FTEs, and most within the areas of clerical support, so we have a part-timer in the elementary building, which we did eliminate last year, we are proposing to bring that position back, it is a need, there's a support need in that building, there's a lot of, a lot going on in the elementary level, so we are proposing to bring that back, you can see the various savings throughout these different line items, most of them related to retirement resignations, just some staffing changes that have happened, but not monitoring, not, not changing the FTEs itself, the big one, building administration, as you know, we have two administrators in each of our buildings, last year, the way we had worked it is we did have a resignation of Mrs. Greening, which occurred prior to the budget being finalized, and at that time, we were in talks of trying to come up with a creative way to fill the position under the current budget, budget circumstances we were working with, so we, we were going to do is put a teacher on special assignment, which is called a TOSA, and by doing that, that particular teacher would remain in the teaching unit, but work out of, not in the classroom, but help out in the administrative level. That particular person would be remaining in the teacher's budget, in the instructional side of the budget, however, as things progressed and we moved on into the process of beginning the school year, that person was hired as a formal administrator, therefore, no longer budgeted for in the instructional side, we did budget at the time for that person on the special assignment, as well as a social worker to replace her, so we are seeing a savings, once we get to the instructional side of things, in a few weeks, you'll see a savings in the social worker line item itself of that salary coming out and moving up into the administrative line, so technically, there's no FTE change in administration, we've always planned to have the two per building, and that is our plan going forward.
Carrie, if you don't mind, just explain FTE, because some people might not understand that.
Oh, I'm sorry, full-time equivalent is what an FTE is, that's a full-time person equals one body, so as you see, four FTEs, there's four people filling that position, 1.5 is instead of a 40-hour work week, it's a 20-hour work week, so that's how we manage our FTEs, 1.2 equals one day, and we go up from there. So this is the other expenses, as it's related to the administrative component, our contractual expenses, supplies, BOCs and benefits, those benefit costs are just for those specific employees that were just on the previous slide, and these benefits take in all of their TRS, the ERS, which is the retirement system costs, health insurance, dental insurance, vision, any other social security benefits, all of that flows through there as part of the cost associated with those specific people, you can see, the increase here that we're having is in BOCs, and that is due to a lot of online programming that we bought, they fall within the administrative side on the BOCs, so the Zoom licensing, which we're using now, those type of things, some other online components for instructional purposes have increased the cost of BOCs, we're analyzing that currently to see if we're gonna continue to need all of those services that we purchased this year, or are we gonna be able to curtail some or not need any at all, so that's still being reviewed, it's not finalized as of yet, BOCs just released a budget last week, they've not, not all the numbers are in, but we have most of them, so we're still tweaking some of the numbers within BOCs itself and their services, contractual services, you can see, has, has gone down, we currently monitor our contractual expenses every year, we look at the trend, we look at what are we using, do we need to continue to use it, we are looking to do more and more shared services, so we're starting to see some savings within those areas. So overall, our administrative component budget, taking into account some retirements that happened this year, providing for some savings, our health insurance and retirement rates have increased, health, health insurance this year did not increase as much as we had anticipated, next year, we do have budgeted a sizable increase, we're budgeting about 9% at this point in time, we're not sure when the effects of the current pandemic are gonna hit, hit the health insurance industry, which are gonna raise the rates up, so we're just being conservative right now, we're continuing to ask the questions and try to lock that number in by the end of the budget process, and again, as I mentioned before, BOCs services, we're seeing some increases in that, however, as a whole, the administrative component is down just under 1% budget to budget. So now onto the capital side, capital budget is the utilities, our buildings and grounds staff, our custodial staff, our security staff, equipment, machinery replacement that we have going on, as well as the one piece, which many people don't understand, that come into this particular component, is our principal and interest payment on our TAN, which is our tax anticipation note, we borrow every year in around the fall time, because we don't start getting tax money from the assessor's office until December and January, so therefore, we have to borrow to keep operations flowing until cash starts coming in, and then we also have our bonds, which we've borrowed in the past on our capital projects, so that's all part of the capital component as a whole. So again, a staffing chart for our buildings and grounds crew, you can see, again, all flat, we're not proposing any increase, the only increase we do have is in our custodial, which this increase actually did occur this year, while we budgeted 11 FTEs for the current school year, we added an FTE through what's called the CARES Act, so the governor last year had reduced our budgets by a certain amount of money, and then was potentially going to replace that with money through the CARES Act, and that was federal money, that funding source did come through, we actually just received approval today on it, but knowing that it was coming, it was guaranteed money, it was just a matter of how we, how, how we allocate it within our budget lines, and using that guidance that we were given back in September, and knowing the challenges we had with COVID and reopening, and the extensive cleaning needed to be done throughout the buildings, we hired an additional custodial staff member to assist with that, but that funding was a one-time funding source, so we will be absorbing that particular staff member into our general fund budget next year, at least that's what we're proposing right now as we're going through the budget process, again, there's no other FTE changes within the other areas, we have two maintenance guys, two guys within the grounds area, security will hold two guards in the elementary building, one in the middle school, two in the high school, and then we have a supervisor who floats, these guards that are related to this are not the armed guards, we do have one armed guard still in the budget for each building. So again, the capital component, you'll see there are, you know, some slight changes, utilities, we are decreasing slightly, and that's a result of some of the EPC work that's going to begin, as well as just tracking the trend, we're also working on a contract with the county for National Grid for shared services, so we do anticipate those rates going down as a result of that contract, but the big one you see that jumps out is the debt, we go from $2.9 million in debt in the current school year to $1.3 million next year, and that is just simply, we had a bond that retired, we've paid it in full, they're 15-year bonds, we've made our final payment this year, therefore, we don't have to carry that cost anymore, you'll see the results of this as we get, get on to the revenue side a little bit further in the presentation. You'll see the results of this as we get, get on to the revenue side a little bit further in the presentation. So with debt service decreasing significantly and our staffing pretty much remaining flat, you can see this budget has decreased significantly, 1.4 million. So the largest part of that is our debt service, causing a significant decline in the capital component of the budget. So just to, you know, talk about, I mentioned we were utilities costs, we'll be seeing some savings because of the EPC, which is an energy performance contract that the board entered into last year. It is up at SCD, we're waiting for final approval and we anticipate this work to begin in the spring. Once it's complete, we'll start seeing savings in our utility costs, which will pay for the work that's getting done. So there's no cost to the taxpayers. If you recall back in June, when we had our vote, we did put up a proposition to have the voters approve the project itself as well. And that approval, thankful that we did receive that approval from the community, allows us to get an extra 10% in building aid. So that extra 10% just becomes additional revenue to the district. So something else we've been working on and we've been talking about for the past couple of years, also part of the board goals is to create a capital reserve. So this just kind of outlines what a capital reserve is and why we feel we need one in the district. We've presented this before in some of our facilities committee meetings as well as some budget meetings. But essentially what a capital reserve does, it allows us to take money that we may have at the end of the year, which is surplus from revenue or any savings and expenditures above the 4% allowable limit that we can carry and allocate it to a reserve specific for capital projects. That reserve would detail out exactly what kind of projects could be done. The voters have to approve us establishing the reserve. And then on the other side, the voters actually have to prove the spending of the actual reserve. So once you start adding up into a sizable amount that you can actually do a particular project, you then would go out to the voters to say, okay, we have $5 million in a capital reserve. We need to do the roof. Will you approve us spending that money on that particular project? And you can't use any of that money until voters approve it. So these are just again, some of the things that we need. We have some roof leaks, we have the sidewalks that are in desperate need of replacement and repair, some parking lots, causing some issues of pitching, our tennis courts are in need of repair. So you know, overall, it's district wide that we're seeing some of these things. And again, it's something we would propose in the future to the, to the community to establish. It would be something such as over the next 10 years, we can fund up to $100,000 or $500,000 above the 4%, no cost to taxpayers. And then once we get up to a certain amount of money to the maximum allotted, we would allow to be allowed to start spending the money with voter approval. So now on the revenue side, we started working on our allowable tax levy. We've received all the information, so it has been reported to the controller's office. It's due March 1st, so I did file it already based on the fact that we have all the information now. So this is the calculation that is set by the controller's office that we have to use. So the tax based growth factor is based on construction within your community. And that goes up or down depending on what the construction is. Last year, it was a 1.0036, we had very limited growth. This year, you can see we went up significantly to a 1.1, 1.0153. This is a number, it's a non-negotiable, the controller sets it, releases it, posts it up. And that's the number where, where we have to use within this formula. We then would take any pilot money, the Senate Riches does not receive any pilot money at all. So that becomes null and void in ours. Our prior year exemptions are a debt service. That's the monies that were, we were expending in debt and then net of that is the building aid you're receiving. So the allowable growth factor is the 2%. Everyone says it's a 2% tax cap. This is where the 2% comes into play to determine. It's a 1.23% this year, it's not 2%. Therefore, some districts you'll see will be either above 2% or below 2%. Some may even be negative as you start seeing tax caps, the allowable tax levies be released through Newsday. Again, pilot money, which we don't receive. So we come up with what our total levy is allowed. And then from there, we take in our exemptions, ERS and TRS. If it's 2% increase above the prior year rate, you can take a reduction on, you can tax for that. We, that is not occurring, it has not occurred. It's only occurred once since the inception of the tax cap for each of those. Then from there, we take what our capital exclusion is. So we take in our principal and interest as well as a new issue that became into play last year was the BOSI's capital expense. So we all pay into the BOSI's to help them pay their bills. In return, we do get state aid for those expenditures, but we do pay a portion of their capital costs of which we use, we use their buildings, our children go to school there. So every district gets a share of that expense. And then from there, we deduct out our building aid. That's revenue to help offset those current expenditures we have to come up with our capital exclusion. So you can see our capital exclusion this year is $512,000, whereas last year up above, you see it as over a million dollars. And that is because our debt has decreased as well as our building aid. So our total levy increase allowed by the tax cap law is 0.667% in dollars. That's $162,000 that we can raise our levy for next year. So as we actually came up at our last meeting, you know, being that we were so low, we're just saying, okay, well, what happens, what money are we out? Being that tax cap there, everyone's saying is 2%. It's not really 2% for every district. And what we're trying to do is advocate for 2%, you know, change the law to say that it is at 2%. And that kind of gives everybody an equal playing field. But for Senate Riches, this, you can see on this chart where this year we can only levy 162,000 more. If we were allowed 2%, it's an additional 324,000 on top of that. So that's it, you know, it's while it's a small number in the scheme of a $44 million budget, it's a significant number for us. We are a small district. We do rely on our taxpayers for revenue and we do need the assistance. So if we could continue to speak to our legislators and let them know what a 2% tax levy is right now for Senate Riches, it's not 2%, it's 0.667 and we're leaving over $300,000 on the table. Dr. Messer, you want to jump in? I see you popped up.
No, I just, you know, I think that that's important thing to note. And yeah, it is, you know, it is a, you know, a difficult year for everyone. But certainly some of our advocacy continues to be, let 2% be 2%.
So you know, and with that is our state aid. We receive a portion of our funding from state and a lot of it's been frozen over the past few years. Foundation aid has been frozen, our high cost aid and BOSI's aid, transportation aid are all part of expense based aids. There's proposal out there to freeze it and not have it run off of expenditures, which causes districts to look at things a little bit differently, possibly not use a BOSI's and a shared service as much as we may do now because you're not going to get the aid on it. So it's, it's causing a big conversation in our world right now. We just attended a legislative meeting on Saturday, the board and the administration, where we're, we're proposing, you know, these things have to change. What the governor is proposing can't stick. We do need our expense base aids to drive off of the expenditures because it helps a district significantly. So again, the one that jumps out on this one though, is the building aid. So we have decreased building aid, which is truly related to the expiring of capital debt. So as we have the debt fall off the books, we have a 1.8 million, we have just over a million of building aid falling off of that as well. We're only funded for 15 years with building aid, our bonds are only 15 years. So the timing, we knew was happening, we have presented this in the past. But now we're seeing what the true effect is of that. So this is just a little bit comparison, a little bit more details into the numbers of what the state proposal is. So our services aid is a new category. On the next slide, I'll get into what's exactly within that and what we're used to seeing in years past. Last year, the governor did present combining all services aid into one category. The legislation did not let that get through, which was in our benefit. And now he's proposing it again. Sometimes, you know, he proposes year after year and eventually it sticks. So you know, it's just a matter of time, we think. So we're continuing to rally against it and have support to keep the expense based aids going. Again, decreased in building aid, 1.8 million of debt expiring on the expenditure side, 1 million of revenue expiring on the, on the aid side. Star payments, this year, the governor put this into his state aid runs. We receive STAR, as you know, it's a tax levy reduction, it not levy reduction, I shouldn't say that. It's a savings for the taxpayers. So we levy what we levy, $23 million. And we tell the assessor, we need $23 million from all of our taxpayers. From that, they take what the exemptions are for STAR and submits, submit that bill to the state. The state then pays us a portion of money. So we, while this year we got $2 million in STAR money, he's anticipating we would get 1.9 million next year. However, that number is not set until around November, December, when the assessor finalizes the assessment values, we finalize our tax levy. That's when we then calculate what the STAR payment is from the state portion. So by the governor putting it in here, we're all trying to figure out what it means, what is he doing? Why is it now part of a state aid run when it's not state aid? It's actually levy money. It's a game changer. So again, we're, we're working through it. We're working with our organizations to get a clear understanding. And we're just waiting to see what next, the next proposal will be. So you can see again, there's a local district funding adjustment of 1.4 million in the current school year. That was not there last year. Last year, we did have an adjustment of a pandemic adjustment, the 109, which was then put back by the CARES Act, which I mentioned earlier. So again, those are federal one time funding sources that are making up for some of the reductions that are being made. So you can see it's a reduction and then an add in. So it's a net impact on our budget right now. But the problem is in the future. If those reductions become permanent and don't get backfilled by the federal government in the future, we then start our state aid out by $1.4 million short next year, and that's less revenue. So you can see on this, and if you've read News, Newsday, I believe it was yesterday, there was front page and an article about all the school districts on Long Island that would actually lose state aid under the governor's proposal. And Senate Riches was listed on that as one of them because we are one of the highest decreases in the runs of a negative 8.7%. However, if you remove building, the building aid loss, the $1 million, which is a simple pay, final payout, it's not anything the governor has done. Our actual decrease in state aid is only 1%. So we are not part of that top category as a result of our building aid falling off. So that's something that is, is important to understand. We knew we were going to have a reduction in state aid this year. We knew it, we told the community in the, in prior presentations, we anticipated it. It just looks ugly when you look at it in this manner. And when the, you know, Newsday and all the reports are out there, oh my God, Senate Riches is losing all this money. We're not actually, we are, we are losing a small amount of money. We don't want to lose any, we'd rather gain. But it's just important to note that it's simply due to our debt expiring as well as our building aid being fully paid out on a particular project. So this is the services aid. As I said earlier, the governor's proposing to take all of these and consolidate it into one funding source. And it freezes it. So you can see the differences of what we have. Transportation aid did go down and that was simply just a result of the closure last year. We didn't expend all the transportation money that we anticipated. So we didn't know we would have a reduction in transportation aid again this year. The other one is BOSI's aid. We have to look at that a little bit further when we kind of finalize our numbers for expenditures this year for BOSI's. Well, we get about 69% reimbursement on BOSI's expenses that we incur. The numbers that get presented in the state aid run are off of what our original budget was. And that budget is getting adjusted almost on a daily basis, either terminating services or purchasing new services. So that's something we're continuing to look at to see if we have to make either an increase or a decrease to that particular revenue source. It won't be finalized in the state aid runs. It actually doesn't get finalized until August of the following year that we know what our final BOSI's numbers were for the prior year. So you know, you can see our proposed service aids did increase just about 1%. So the other large portion of our revenue is our tuition. Many people know we have great tuition programs in the district. Our special education program is one of them. Our student count is pretty much remaining flat. It's due simply just to students that have graduated out of the program is why we see the change. And the revenue stream and the way we calculate tuition is based off of the actual expenditures of the staff involved in those programs. So as those salaries are changing or there's movement occurring within the teachers and what classrooms they're in and what classrooms the students are in, that's how we go through and determine what our actual revenue stream will be for those for the next year. The Native American, we have a contract with the state for five years. That rate gets set by the state and we get that rate usually the following year. So we're currently anticipating receiving the 2019, 20 tuition rate. We are right now billing the state off of the 1819 tuition rate. So this number is subject to change as soon as we receive the prior year's rate. We can adjust this number to account for it a little bit more accurately. Again, we are seeing a one student change here, but you do see the significant dollar change. And that is due to the tuition rate change as well as some of our higher cost needs students, which we do get additional aid on, have, have graduated their programs. So you know, it's a benefit to those children, they've, they've succeeded and moved on. But we, you know, we see a reduced cost on that. But again, we see a reduced expenditure as well on the other side. And then the other is the East Murch's students. We are anticipating potentially 65 students based on their current enrollment. We don't have final numbers from them, we typically get that in March. So this will be updated once we have that as well from them. So this is just again, the budget calendar. Next meeting is March 17th, where we'll go through actually the program component, the instructional side of the budget, which is 75% of our budget. So that is the largest piece. Our administrative team will work together on that presentation to go through the actual programs being proposed for next year, what our enrollment projections are looking like for everything, staffing and all that. And then we'll also revisit revenue, provide some updates from, if we have any updates on state aid, the tuition, as well as all the other miscellaneous revenue categories that we work within. And then in April, we'll finalize the budget with the board adopting it. May 5th is the budget hearing and May 18th is at this point, the annual budget vote in person. We've not heard of any changes occurring with the vote this year at this point in time. Does the board have any questions or want clarification on anything?
Carrie, go ahead, Marcus.
Carrie, no, you did a nice job covering the, the loss of aid due to paying off the debt. I just wanted to clarify, so that, that's a one time change, right? So we would expect the following year, if everything else was equal, which it will be, but, but if it were, we would expect the aid to come back up to levels we've seen previously, right?
No, it's going to remain flat now because that aid has expired. It's going to, we anticipated to go up, not next year, the year after, because of the energy performance contract. So it will go up slightly as a result of that. But we won't hit up to that million dollar level because we have no, no new debt, no new capital projects coming onto the books. So if we were to put into place a capital reserve or pass a capital bond and borrow again, or you know, capital reserve, you wouldn't have to borrow for, but if we had a bond and we would borrow, that, all that work becomes an aidable expense again. So using a bond, you're not borrowing and incurring any debt, but you are receiving future revenue.
Okay, so, so even though in next year's calculation, we have, we have less exemptions, we have less of the prior year exemptions being removed from the tax base, that, that doesn't compensate some.
Our levy will actually go back up. I believe last presentation, we showed what the, the effect is on the, of the levy, that it's going to actually, it's going to level back up to over 2%. And that's, you know, given all those other factors that come into play. But we now steady out, we, you know, we drop down right now due to that loss. But then next year, it goes back up and starts balancing out in the years out.
Right, okay, got it.
Carrie, can you go to the, the capital reserve slide? I'm just curious. Sorry. So if we use money from the, if we go out for a bond, I'm just trying to clear it in my head, that's aidable, correct? Like if we pass a bond, we get aid. If we use money from our capital reserve, which is our savings, I understand, is that aidable as well or no?
Yes, any work you do is aidable if it's new construction. If it's a repair, it's not aidable. And if it's work done on the outside, it has to be tied into work being done on the outside in order it to be able, aidable. So if we use a capital reserve and just do the tennis courts, there's no aid to be had. But if we use the capital reserve and do the tennis courts as well as the roof, you'll get aid on the entire project. So you have to get creative with how you pair them. If you're going to do any outside work, which we need a lot of outside work, the parking lots, the sidewalks and stuff like that, we would have to always tie it into doing an inside project or a building specific project. So by enhancing your building, you're able to drive aid on the total project.
Okay, so Carrie, do you, do you recommend us start the facilities committee? Start looking into some of these numbers in, you know, in the next couple of years? Year or two, start looking into a, perhaps putting up a bond?
Yeah, so we've, you know, in the past, Yeah, so we've, you know, in the past, um, well, since I've been here, we've been talking about this. We've been kind of categorizing the work. Um, between what would be capital, what we could do with the repair reserve, what we could do with the general fund as well as the EPC. You know, successfully, we did get a lot of items off the list for the EPC. Um, and now it's taking that list and finalizing it further for what do we have less left? Um, what we're waiting for is the building condition survey from our architects. Once we have that, we'll have more updated numbers. You know, the numbers we have are about two years old on these projects. So we'll have kind of going rate numbers for a lot of these things. And once we have that report in, facilities committee will be called together. To go through that, prioritize and, and you know, then we can start sharing out with the community, what are we looking at? And how much of a potential bond or a capital reserve fund would we want to create or both?
Okay, what, what, what is our, what is our rate right now? Our state aid, 60, is it 67% this, that we get from state aid on any kind of bond?
Yes, I believe so. I'd have to double check it. I don't know.
High 60s?
Yeah, that's the number. Remember, we talked about through the.
Yeah, and then our additional 10% on top of that, so.
Right, you need voter approval for the extra 10%, correct?
No, you only need the voter approval for the energy performance.
Energy performance, okay.
Yep, everything else, you automatically get the extra 10%. Yep.
So I mean, that's huge. So you're getting basically 70 something percent on these projects. I mean, I can speak, just looking down this list. These things have been on the list for the last almost 10 years, some of them. I mean. It, it, it's time to really start digging in, getting the, you know, the roof repairs and the sidewalks and the parking lots. These things have been uh, in desperate need for quite some time.
And this is just the shortlist. Um, the slide wasn't big enough, so.
What do you expect to get the list from the architect, Carrie? Do we have a timeframe where they're going to be coming back with their?
Raina, have you heard from them on a timeline yet?
Uh, I haven't, but they did say end of January, so I'll check in with them soon. I'll check in with them tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd like to set, you know, the next uh, facilities committee.
Yeah, and they'll, and they'll come to the meeting and go through the entire report with us. It's very comprehensive. As Carrie said, it will have numbers attached to it as well. Um, they have all the information they need from us at this point. Um, but I'll, I'll reach out to them tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Carrie, on this slide also, um, the numbers you have at the bottom are um, 500,000 per year. That, that number was chosen by us.
No, that's just an example. Um, we don't have a formal proposition. This is a conversation to be, the board needs to decide if you want to do a capital reserve. Create one this year on the ballot. Um, I, I don't know if now is the time to put something up like this um, in the current. World we're living in. Um, but I think it's something, we have to have a conversation. We need to start having that conversation and, you know. Start educating the community so that everyone's aware and a lot will be done through the facilities committee work. And then continue, you know, putting this up there, explaining it. And we would then come up with a dollar limit. How many years we want to take to fund it and how, what's the maximum we would put in each year? So if you do something like this, maximum funding of 500,000 per year. And you only have $300,000 excess of your 4%. But we need to pay back another reserve, or 200,000, we may only put 100,000 into the capital. It's, you can put in little to nothing or up to 500,000. You know, so it gives you that, it gives you a little bit of wiggle room with what you want to do, and that becomes a board decision each year.
Right, so that's what I'm trying to understand, the, the relationship of the 4% and the, and this, this uh, example number, let's call it 500,000. Is that 500,000 above the 4%?
Correct. So our proposal, the administration's proposal to the board would not, would be to use only excess monies. We would not put a line item in the budget to tax the taxpayers. We would not do a separate proposition for additional funding. It would only fund a reserve if we have excess funds above the maximum 4% allowable.
Right, and is there another limit that kicks in above that 4%? Because I mean, some of this is, is, is budgeting, right? You can actually budget more or less conservative to, to hit a certain surplus if you want to, right? So can, can you, can you push, let's say we really want to reap the maximum savings by, by funding this capital reserve. Could you push very hard to get to 500,000 or is, is there a higher number you could push to? Is there, is some statute?
Some districts do a million. Some, some will put a million, some will put 200,000. Um, you know, and again, that's a conversation we have as a board, we have with council. Um, and we have with the community. You know, what's the comfort level? Where, where is everybody's comfort level? Because like you just said, sometimes. Some districts may go higher and therefore they're padding their general fund budget in order to make sure they have that surplus. We don't have the wiggle room in our budget to do that. Um, you know, we have no contingencies within our budgets. It was one of the first things I learned when I came here. Um, so. You know, as far as what we're concerned on how we budget, we budget conservative, but. We go conservative to, to the extent that our budget will allow it. Um, you know, where we, like last week. Two weeks ago, we presented the fund balance projections and we're monitoring it closely to make sure we actually hit the 4% and we can pay back reserves we've already used. You know, we don't anticipate having extra funds this year, so we don't believe it's necessary to get this on a proposition right now. Um, we will have excess funds, but we have reserves we have to pay back. We borrowed from our ERS and TRS. That we want to pay back to potentially use in the future again to sustain our budget. So. You know, this, I don't think this is a year that we would even fund it, so why bother putting it up as a proposition? Um, but it's, we, you know, we wanted to just start having the conversation.
Yeah, I would say that generally, these things are proportionate to, to your fund budget, you know, I, you know, so. A, a larger district would have a higher threshold than a smaller district could have a smaller threshold. So this is just a target, as Carrie said. A conversation that, that needs to be had because we do have capital work that, that has to be done down the road. I think that one of the flexibilities we're looking for this year is actually to allow. Um, districts to carry above the 4%, given the fiscal constraints that we're looking at a couple of years down the road. Um, and so that's some of the regulatory flexibility we're actually looking for. Um, rather than, you know, kind of funding something like this, we might, we might need that buffer down the road.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Carrie. That's a really thorough job. I really appreciate that. Um, and uh, you know, I, I guess that's, that's really the end of my report. The only thing I would say is that. I just did get informed that um, for those of you that like to take in a little bit. Uh, the Senate Riches segment on Fox and Friends will also air at 8:20.
All right, thank you for that, Ron. Thank you, Carrie. Good presentation and good conversation. I appreciate it. Um, that gives us questions and comments regarding tonight's agenda only. If anybody has a question, Bill, if their hands go up about tonight's agenda only. Uh, please be reminded there'll be time at the end for any questions. Will?
Uh, we got one hand up. Hold on, Renee Passaro. Okay.
Oh, there I go. Hi, um, Ron, you had mentioned that you were getting uh, vaccinations for the Senate Riches Unit Free School District employees. Um, that's not an option for children right now in the district. So how is that going to make it possible for children to be able to attend school? Um, in a larger setting?
Yeah, you know, the only, the only thing I could say about that is there are hints and rumors. That um, a high percentage of staff vaccinated may result in some, you know, relaxation. By the CDC and the local departments of health on um, on capacity. Uh, you know, so like the, the less than six foot. Um, but that's, it's rumor. Renee, I really don't have anything to, you know, base that on, other than um, some whispers that are taking place. And the fact that the, you know, CDC has recently, you know, changed that guidance on the quarantines.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Well, any others?
No, no more hands up.
Okay. So that brings us to approval of minutes. Board of Education is asked to accept the minutes of the following meeting as prepared by the district clerk. Minutes of the meeting of the Board of Ed uh, on January 27th, 2021, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Financial reports. Resolved at the Board of Ed upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. Accepts the following financial reports, budget transfers, exhibit 2A, exhibit 2B, internal claims audit report. January 2021, exhibit number three, motion? Motion, anyone?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Am I glitching or something? No, it's good. All right. Uh, Janine, that's you then.
Hey there. Okay, consent agenda vote, be resolved. A motion to approve the consent agenda. Asterisk agenda items or consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are approved by a single vote unless they are removed from being a consent item prior to the vote.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Question?
All in favor?
Discussion?
Okay.
George, uh, just a quick question. Item 11, business and finance. Uh, the second contract, uh, I'm just, I'm not clear. Why it's for 2020 summer program and, and internally it references that timeframe. I just didn't understand that.
It's for actually, um, East Riches just returned their contract for the summer that just took place. So we've already educated the child. It's just a formality we got, and we've already billed them. Um, they're just now sending their contract back to us, so. That's all. It's for the past, it's for July, August of 2020. Soon you'll be seeing contracts for 2021.
Thank you.
Yep.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. And I do want to just uh, pause here and I, I do want to. Certainly acknowledge Raina and Golia for all of the good work she's done here within our district and. My short time on the board, Raina, I've enjoyed all of our conversations on curriculum and. You wear many hats and you wear them well, and you will certainly be missed, and we certainly wish you all the best. In your future and um, the role that you decided to accept and. The challenges that lay before you. So good luck and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And uh, yeah, yeah. You know, I, I, you know, in the um, in the year and a half Raina and I have had together. Uh, I think we've done some, some really great work and I've always enjoyed the conversations, the camaraderie. Um, and the professionalism with which you've handled yourself, Raina. Um, I think that in your time here, you, you've done a tremendous amount. Um, to, to forward curriculum initiatives that have put the kids, the children and generations of Senate Riches students. Um, in a better position. Um, so I think you're to be commended for that. Um, you know, the um, you know. Getting our, ourselves to a place where we have, uh, we can be very proud. Of the um, diploma program at our high school and our middle years program at, at our middle school. Um, you know, and it's credit to the, to the work that you've done. Um, to, to, to say that, hey, we're, we're this, this little district that can. Um, can provide this quality education, but do so in a way um, that, you know, requires some outside of the box thinking. Um, and, and you've always been able to do that um, and do it with tremendous grace. So Raina, thank you for all you've done. Um, and the support you've given to, to everyone here at Senate Riches. You will be sorely missed on this team.
Can I, can I, I want to jump into Raina. I um, I've worked with you now for many, five or six years. And as somebody who went to school here and has worked with you, you have been a true believer of our kids. And when we talk about bringing IV and the kid, people are like, oh, Senate Riches, it's, it's a sports school. It's not that kind of school and. You know, AP class is okay. You have pushed and believed in the kids of Senate Riches. And just gotten them to believe in themselves and push themselves to take classes that. You know, I'm not an AP kid and you have encouraged kids to believe that they are and. What you've done for our kids and, and, and this, the town of Senate Riches, I, I thank you and I'm going to miss you greatly.
I, I wanted to thank all of you. Um, this is a very hard decision for me. I promised I wouldn't do this, but you know. I am overwhelmed by what Dr. Masara said, Mr. Maxwell, Ms. Rayburn said, um, George, Rob and Ron. Everyone else on the board and the entire Senate Riches community. It has been a phenomenal place to work. And um, this was a decision that was very hard, but um, I love all of you. And I believe in what we're doing here. But you know, sometimes life takes you in a different direction. And um. I pulled up my bulletin board today. Something that I found in the hallway of the high school many years ago. And um, I've carried it with me ever since. And I'm going to read it to you because I think it really embodies what Senate Riches is all about and what our students are all about. If you do not go after it, after what you want, you'll never have it. If you do not ask, the answer will always be no. If you do not step forward, you will always be in the same place. The more opportunities that you take, the more chances you have to be successful. And I knew one of our students dropped it and I worked really hard to find out who it was. And I don't know if she wrote them or found them, but um, this was um, a student Kylie Nolan, some of you might know. And uh, she was one of our student leaders and I've carried this with me ever since. She wrote it on the back of a Mets trivia calendar. Um, but I believe that this student voice represents all of Senate Riches and the entire Senate Riches School community. Um, that I will always carry in my heart and that I will truly, truly miss. So thank you guys very much. Sorry for the emotion, but that's who I am. So thank you all. I've loved working with this board and all the um, Senate Riches family. Thank you.
Thank you, Raina.
Thanks, Raina. I, I don't know where I'll hide, I'll hide my narwhals now, Raina.
I'll leave you a few. I'll hide them in interesting places, so you know, maybe you'll find one, you know, many years from now. So. Thanks.
Um, that brings us to the general public questions. Members who desire to address or question the board on any topic. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks, the whole thing there. You ready, Bill?
I'm ready.
Okay.
No hands yet. Still nothing.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, am I muted? No, I'm not. Okay. It came up with a blue mute. I don't know. Um. All right, so. What was that?
People leaving the room.
Okay. All right, I don't know if we had a hand or a comment or something, so. All right, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Our next Board of Ed meeting is March 3rd, 20, March 3rd. 2021, exec at 6, action meeting approximately 7 o'clock, location to be determined. Um, thank you, everybody for coming out tonight. And we wish everybody well and stay safe.
Good night.
Good night.
Everyone. Thank you.